Seventh meeting of the Garden Grove City Council, Madam Clerk, would you like to call a roll?
Councilmember Brightigum.
Here.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Here.
Councilmember Tu Hauwin.
Here.
Councilmember Bowie.
Yeah.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen.
Here.
Mayor Protem Klaffenstein.
Here.
And Mayor Jones.
Here.
Can I ask Councilmember Brightigum to lead us in the pledge and first ask Maria Stipe to lead us in the invocation.
Marie Rice.
Everybody could please stand and prepare yourselves according to your faith. Dear Lord, we ask that you be with us tonight as we seek to understand and embrace the needs of our community. We also humbly ask that you guide us to answer those needs and to do what is best for all of the citizens of Garden Grove. Amen.
Amen.
May I place a flag? Hand over heart. Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and with that, we actually have one item that's got to go concurrent, that's City Council and also Housing Authority. So we're going to recess to the Housing Authority, which is under FAT, and he'll go through Housing Authority, and then that one item will be a joint item between City Council and Housing Authority, so.
Sure. Madam Clerk, would you like to draw a call for the Housing Authority?
Commissioner Beckles.
Here.
Commissioner Brightigum.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Klaffenstein.
Here.
Commissioner Tu Hauwin.
Here.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Here.
Vice Chair Kim Nguyen.
Here.
Chair Bowie.
Yeah.
And Commissioner Solario is absent.
Thank you. I would like to open oral communication. Is there anyone from the public would like to talk about anything, any matter that concern Housing Authority? Seeing none, I close oral communication and we move to consent items, that three items, two A to two C, is a staff report for each of them.
Move to approve.
Second. Please call for the vote.
Motion received, eight yes votes.
We now move to item for consideration, item 3A, appropriation of funding and award for sub-receivants.
Item 3A is appropriation of funding and award of sub-receivable contracts to Interval House Crisis Shelters and Mercy House Living Centers for the operation of a homeless emergency assistance rental transition program, and this is a joint item with the City Council. And the Housing Authority is asked or is recommended to approve the appropriation. And Mr. Robbins is here to give the report.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm here this evening to request that the City Council award sub-receivable contracts with Interval House and Mercy House for the operation of the homeless emergency assistance rental transition or HARP program. Secondly, to appropriate home funds for the operation of the HARP program. And third, to request the Housing Authority to appropriate low mod income housing trust funds, or as I'll call it throughout the report, LMI HTF funds, for the operation of the HARP program. At the May 28, 2019 City Council Study Session, staff was directed to create housing opportunities for the, for those experiencing homelessness in Garden Grove. As a result, staff has created the HARP program. The HARP program provides 12 months of rental assistance for individuals or families that meet the following criteria. They must meet the Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD's definition of literally homeless. They must have a strong tie to the city of Garden Grove, which means they either last worked here, they have children enrolled in school here, or they were last housed here. They must place low on the vulnerability index, otherwise known as the VI SPADA, and they must enroll in and participate in a life enrichment program, which is tailored to meet their individual needs and to ensure a successful transition to permanent housing at the conclusion of the 12-month program. Staff recommends contracting with two nonprofit service providers to operate the HARP program. A request for proposal was prepared and sent to 15 different service providers seeking proposals to operate the program. Four service providers submitted proposals. They were Colette's Children's Home, Illumination Foundation, Interval House, and Mercy House. A five-person evaluation team reviewed each of the submitted proposals. The scores were averaged, and the two highest scoring providers, which were Interval House and Mercy House, are being recommended to operate the program. Staff recommends Interval House and Mercy House to receive contracts of $300,000 each, which is broken into $250,000 in federal home funds and $50,000 in LMI HTF funds to operate the HARP program. Both organizations are qualified by virtue of experience and expertise to accomplish the services requested, and both have a clear understanding of the city's objectives. Staff's recommending a total of $600,000, which is $500,000 in home funds and $100,000 in LMI HTF funds, be allocated for the operation of the HARP program. As I said earlier, each service provider will receive a total of $300,000, which is $250,000 in home, for rental assistance, utility allowance, security deposits, and related moving costs, and then the $50,000 in LMI HTF funds are allocated to cover the staff costs for administering the life enrichment program. It's expected that this level of funding will enable us to assist 20 homeless individuals from the streets to permanent housing, excuse me, 20 households, up to 60 individuals. The home and LMI HTF funds that we use to fund the HARP program are available and will not impact any planned project or activity nor impact the general fund. Staff recommends that the City Council appropriate $500,000 in home funds for the HARP program, award sub-receivable contacts, excuse me, contracts to Interval House Crisis Shelters and Mercy House Living Centers, and to authorize a city manager to execute the contracts and make minor modifications as appropriate on behalf of the city. Staff also recommends that the Housing Authority appropriate $100,000 in LMI HTF funds into the 1920 budget to fund the HARP program. This concludes my report. We actually have a representative from Mercy House in the audience, her name's Sarah Jones. If you have any questions, I can answer your questions as well. Thank you.
Question for staff?
This is the joint item between the two?
Yeah. Would you like to do the housing vote first?
Sure.
I have one question, just to clarify. Do we, this funding is, have nothing to do with the Section 8 money or stipend, right?
That's correct, it's different.
Do we have a second?
Motion and Kim.
Let's call for the vote.
Motion received, eight yes votes.
Should we then take the City Council one at this time? And is it the exact same motion and item? Okay. Then I'd like to move it from the City Council standpoint to.
Connect.
Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, back to housing.
We now move to matters from the chair and commissioners. Anyone? Seeing that, I would like to adjourn the Housing Authority meeting to the next meeting and passing it back to the City Council.
All righty, we will reconvene City Council, takes us on to presentations, we do have one, tonight from OCTA.
Item 1A is a presentation on the OC Street Cars presented by the Orange County Transportation Authority.
Hi, good evening. Mayor Jones, councilmembers, Trice Oliveri with the Orange County Transportation Authority, and I'm here representing the OC Street Car Project. I manage the community outreach program, which helps to educate the community about what's happening with the project, and also bring back information or challenges the community's having, so we can mitigate that with the technical team. The OC Street Car Project is the first Measure M2 Project S Transit Extension to MetroLink project to be cleared environmentally and brought into the construction phase. Three key contracts have been approved by the OCTA Board of Directors to move this project forward, and they are the vehicle manufacturing contract with Siemens, the construction contract with Walsh Construction, and most importantly, the full funding grant agreement with the Federal Transit Association Administration, which provides nearly $149 million of federal funding for the project. This is just a refresher for where the route takes us. It's generally going east to west here. On the right side of the map is the Santa Ana MetroLink Station. It is in street running as it runs down an embedded track on Santa Ana Boulevard in the traffic lane throughout the salmon-colored area on your map. And then there's an existing one-way couplet segment in downtown Santa Ana, which returns on Fourth Street and Santa Ana Boulevard. You see in the blue portion of the map is as we take the track down the Pacific Electric right-of-way, and then with a second bridge that goes over Westminster Avenue with the final station, which will be at the intersection of Westminster and Harbor Boulevard. And then you see the little blue box in the middle there, that's where our maintenance and storage facility will be located. So this just gives you a conceptual design of what the platform will be and the different features on it. When we went out and talked to the community, the two things that we heard most was they want to make sure that it's secure and that there was a lot of shade, because when people are used to kind of standing at bus stops without shade. So you can see we have a significant shade structure planned, as well as the features, there's nowhere on the platform where someone could be hiding, and it will be well lit. So we are now in construction on the project. The wet utilities are the sewer, water, and drainage, those are currently under construction by Walsh. The various communication lines, as well as SCE and the gas company, relocations are almost complete, and they are being done by private service providers. The relocations are required to clear the aerial conflicts or to move the aging underground utilities that were located along the alignment. So the project is broken up into five segments. For your purposes tonight, I'm going to focus on Segment One, and, but you rest assured there is work happening in every segment of the project now, especially if any of you traveled in downtown Santa Ana. We've now begun sewer relocation work there on Fourth Street, and you'll notice that there's a lot of detours in the area, also as you pass the Santa Ana train station. So Segment One is on the westerly side of the OCTA right-of-way between Harbor and Rate, and it includes the area where the maintenance and storage facility will be built. This segment is also where the initial vehicle testing will be done, when we get the first vehicles in for delivery. In this segment, the bridge foundation work is underway in the Santa Ana River, as well as at Westminster Avenue, and the maintenance and storage facility, the underground utility work and the foundation construction has begun. In addition to that, grading along the PE right-of-way is occurring. So this just shows you a photo that was taken a couple months ago out at the Santa Ana Bridge location. We have two fixed job site cameras that deliver us these images, and this is looking southwest at the Santa Ana River Bridge Foundation. This foundation includes a number of CIDH, or cast-in-drilled-hole, foundation piles, they are 36 inches in diameter and up to 90 feet long. A hole is drilled, that steel reinforcement, which you see the cages alongside the riverbed there, this steel enforcement, reinforcement is dropped into the hole, and then the concrete is placed around it, and you can see that rebar cage lying there along the area. This method of bridge construction was selected because, as you probably know, that bridge that is existing is on the historical register, and so in order to not have any piles being driven, so we don't have any vibration disruptions, that method of build, of bridge construction was selected. Oops. Some other key street car updates, you can see there, the, what the street car will look like now, it's a Siemens S70 vehicle, it's being built up in Sacramento. Choices have been made for the interior, and you can see some of those, what they look like in the images presented. The operations and maintenance contract is anticipated to be awarded in the first quarter of 2020, and then we have ongoing coordination with the Federal Transit Administration, obviously the cities of Garden Grove and Santa Ana, the Fire Authority, and the Flood Control and OC Parks. We want to thank your staff for their participation and cooperation as we move forward into activities that will be touching in your city. So how can people find out more information about the project? There's a couple of ways, probably the easiest way is to follow the project on Facebook, it can be found at OC Street Car. On Instagram, it's OC Street Car. The website is ocstreetcar.com. If you want to send me an email, it's ocstreetcar@octa.net. I don't think we could have made it any easier. We do send out every two weeks a construction update, kind of looking forward to what's coming up in the next two weeks, and that information is also shared on these, on these social media sites. So that concludes my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions. If there aren't any.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments? Thank you so much for the updates, we appreciate it. Very excited to see this moving forward.
Yeah, we are too.
Okay, that takes us on to oral communications, I do have a number of cards, so I want to ask the, oh.
Yeah, it's a part two.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So my colleague Niall Barrett's here to talk about the I-5, the 55 to 57 project.
Gotcha. Hi, Niall, thanks.
Good evening, members of the council, Mayor Jones, Niall Barrett, Program Manager at OCTA. I believe the presentation I was going to give is, just follows on from the last one, so, and I am here tonight to give an update, a brief update on the I-5 HOV, High Occupancy Vehicle project between the 55 and the 57. Little technical difficulties.
Yeah. Presentation laptop.
Thank you. Okay, so the I-5 HOV, High Occupancy Vehicle, or otherwise known as carpool lanes, improvement project is between the 55 and the 57, and so this slide gives an overview of the project limits in the background, and essentially, if anybody has driven in the carpool lanes coming north or south on the I-5, generally in the city of Santa Ana, also in the city of Anaheim, you'll notice that the two carpool lanes merge into one, there's no way to get out, and I know I've done it myself, where the kids and myself are wondering, why did we carpool at all? And so this project will add a second HOV lane in each direction, both north and southbound, so that it will alleviate and improve traffic times on the carpool lanes throughout this three-mile project limit. The cost of the project is a little over $41 million, and we are currently in construction. One of the key features of this project is the existence of an HOV ramp on Main Street in the city of Santa Ana. This was constructed almost 30 years ago, and the idea was to bring additional HOV onto the lanes. Unfortunately, the HOV ramp was underutilized, and the accident rates were quite high for the ramp. And so the good thing about it is by eliminating that drop ramp from Main Street, it frees up a lot of right-of-way, and so the project has not. up a lot of right-of-way, and so the project has not needed to go outside of the existing Caltrans right-of-way. We're able to widen inwards, which is unusual, but obviously very beneficial as far as right-of-way utilities and other construction-related activities. Overall, then, the project schedule, as I say, we're underway. We began construction with Caltrans and OHL USA on February 20th this year. It's a little over, well, it's, let's see, the project will be complete in early 2021, so it's approximately a two-year project. We closed the drop ramp, as I was mentioning. It happened in April of this year. And what I wanted to do is give you a view. This is the night of August 2nd, it was a Friday night, when Caltrans closed the north-band I-5 freeway completely to begin demolition of that HOV drop ramp. And then also on Saturday night, again, and this is the remainder of that bridge, which was demolished on the Saturday night, and again, the freeway in the north-band direction was closed. The detour route was essentially to send traffic north on the 55 and then west on the 22 to get people back over to where the I-5 was. So we have a number of ways to get the word out to the public. Of course, we have a lot of city council updates such as this, and we have many key stakeholder briefings. We have a lot of neighborhood meetings, Saturday morning, coffee and a donut to get the word out, especially in the proximity of any demolition, any major activities that would need to happen, and we have other various community events. And then for anybody who wants to follow, similar to Teresa's presentation, we do a lot of social media. We also hang a lot of flyers as well. I won't go through each and every ones, but there's obviously, Facebook would be a great place to start. We do have various ways to get the word out, and this completes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions?
Thank you, Niall. Any questions? All right. Thanks a bunch for coming out and taking the time to do that. Okay, and with that, we will move on to oral communications. I do have a number of cards, so I want to ask our speakers to be conscientious about sticking within the time limits and keeping your comments concise as possible. First up is Byron Lopez.
Hello, my name is Byron Lopez. I was actually born here in Garden Grove. I lived here for half my life until I had to move literally like two blocks away over to Santa Ana, and now I live right next to the Willowick Golf Course. So this is actually what we're going to be talking about. I am a member of the Rise of Willowick Coalition, a group of residents, community members, and organizations that have created a collective vision for Willowick to ensure that this community asset of 102 acres of Garden Grove-owned community land is publicly owned, open space, addresses the needs of current residences, current residents both in Santa Ana and Garden Grove. We are unified, organized, and ready to continue to build a powerful vision for future generations in our communities. We are here today to invite the Garden Grove City Council to work with us to ensure that our community's vision and voice is truly honored and leads to development of our public land. We reject the repulsors of private stadiums, luxury market-rate housing, a tech hub, et cetera, gentrifying developments that will lead to the expulsion of the current residents. As of right now, we've actually done surveys. It's also been done by other agencies where 60% of those who live in Santa Anita neighborhood that I live in are renters. We do not own our homes. Even I live in a mobile home park, so we may own the home, but we do not own the land, and we are ultimately susceptible to rapid increases of rent. This has happened in other development, other gentrifying developments, most infamously like in the Bay. So if you do go ahead with these developments, if you do go ahead and work with Santa Ana to develop this giant golf course into, say, a stadium, for example, you are going to be kicking people out of their homes. That is the reality. You're going to be kicking me out of my home. We, you know, wages are not going up. Both of my parents are already 60. I'm currently trying to get through college as fast as I can to get a decent-paying job, but even then, if I do get a good-paying job, there is still, like in two years, if you go ahead with this development, I, we will not have enough to stay in our home, and we do not know where we will, where we or any of my neighbors will go. So I desperately implore that the city council reconsider the possibility of selling the, of either selling the land or at least making responsible, community-guided development of either parks or schools or community centers, community gardens, things that will benefit the currently existing community and not just push us out of the places that we have, some of us have lived in for generations. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cynthia Cuera, and I'm also a member of the Rise of Willowick Coalition. I'm here today because the city council has the ability to ensure that the 102 acres that make up the Willowick Golf Course currently are developed in a way that benefits the community surrounding it and that meets its needs. Currently, the community and residents in the rest of the city of Garden Grove are in need of well-maintained and well-resourced parks. In Garden Grove, only 1% of the total land is dedicated to parks. One comparison, the city of Irvine dedicates 30% of its land to open space and parks, and this equals an investment of $250 per resident in Irvine that goes into open space and parks. We all know that northern, the northern part of the county is very well-developed. It's built out, so it's hard to find places for open space, but you actually have the opportunity right now to create that through the Willowick Golf Course. It would drastically improve the situation of the residents here in Garden Grove and the rest of northern Orange County and also in Santa Ana, because that land is in Santa Ana. I know that I think this city named, I think it was the month of June or July, as a month for, dedicated for open space and parks, and I think that you have a great opportunity to actually make that commitment true and to honor that by preserving this space. Also, Garden Grove, like the rest of Orange County and its neighbors in Santa Ana, is going through an acute housing affordability crisis. You also have the ability to make sure that this space is not used to aggravate or exacerbate that situation by not creating a development that is going to displace residents that are currently here. The residents of Garden Grove and the community surrounding the Willowick site do not need luxury apartments. They don't need a stadium, and they don't need any other type of development that is going to displace them, any type of retail or anything like that that is not going to be accessible to them. So when you're creating this, when you're developing this, as you go right now, because you're currently going through the developers that have submitted their, are the proposals for development projects, think of that. Think of the people who are actually going to live adjacent to this, and think of whatever you choose, how that's going to affect them, and if you're going to force them to move and leave and basically kick them out. The city should work with the residents to ensure that this development process is transparent and truly representative of the community's demands. So as Byron mentioned, since February, a group of residents and community organizations have been going out knocking on doors, we knocked on almost 300 doors, and the vast majority did not know that this was happening. So this just shows either a lack of engagement or not effective engagement of the community surrounding the area that will be impacted by what's happening by both the city of Garden Grove and Santa Ana, because it is, we ended around May, June, and folks still didn't know, who are living literally next to the site. So we just urge you to reach out to our coalition, to the Rise of Willowick Coalition. We urge you to reach out to more residents. We urge you to talk to us, to really include us in this process, because like Byron said, it's going to be folks who are living there, folks who don't have the means to enter luxury apartments, who don't have the means to go into any stadium that you plan on creating, who don't have the means to always eat at whatever mixed-use development that you're going to propose. So really think of them and reach out to us so that we can actually talk about this and make this a truly transparent and a truly community-guided process. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sean, my name is Sean Drexler. I too am a member of the Rise of Willowick Coalition. I am here because of the threat posed to residents in the Willowick area by private developers. As a coalition, we fully expect elected officials in Garden Grove to include us in the decision-making process, especially when those decisions have repercussions that extend far beyond revenue for the city. We need a community-driven process for the development of our public land. As of now, Willowick Golf Course is zoned as open space. We therefore urge the city of Garden Grove to not abzone the use of this public land and not to give it away to the development process. In Irvine, 30% of land is dedicated to parks. In Garden Grove, that percentage is one, just 1%, so this really isn't a big ask. I've seen the devastating effects unchecked development can have on families. Displacement and high rents have forced many to move outside of the city, including members of my own family, so I hope we can stop that from happening to the Willowick residents. It's not a big ask. Just keep the land public and let the community lead.
Hello, my name is Sandra De Anda, and my family has lived in Santa Ana for five generations. I'm the first of the fifth generation to be displaced from my home. I can no longer afford to live in Santa Ana, so then I became susceptible, as most women are during a housing crisis, in which you basically have to like move in with your boyfriend who you barely know, because that's how you survive. And in the last three months, we have had two femicides in Orange County. We had a woman, 25 years old, be killed by her abusive husband, and as of last month, we've had a son kill his mother. And I just think this is going to be the trend, and that's why I'm a member of Rise of Willowick, because housing affects a lot of immigrants. It affects refugees. It affects first-generation immigrants. And basically, if you guys do not want to help us, you will become part of the problem. Our people are going to be displaced. Our people are going to be homeless. Our women and folks from undermined communities are going to end up in domestic violent situations. So yeah, I beg you guys to really consider making this process with the Willowick Golf Course transparent, because we are, we already, we're already seeing the effects now. So please, thank you.
Thank you. Robert Eskandon, and then followed by Roberto McLeish. McLeish. So first, Robert Eskandon. No? Okay, we'll pass on that one. So Roberto McLeish. McLeish, sorry.
Roberta McLeish.
Roberta, sorry.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, Madam Secretary. I'm Roberta McLeish. I'm a registered nurse over at Garden Grove Hospital, the hospital that serves this community. And this is Monica Turner, who is also a nurse that works in the ER at our facility. Tonight, we are also joined by UNAC, which is the union that is representing us in our negotiations with Mr. Prime Ready in creating a fair wage for the nurses that work in this facility and serve your community. On behalf of the 250 nurses working at Garden Grove, I'm here to enumerate the concerns that we have affecting the nurses that work at Garden Grove Hospital. Right now, we have a huge problem with turnover at our facility. Our hospital is known countywide with the other hospitals that serve Orange County that we hire primarily new grads in our facility. These new grads, the facilities will actually say to the new grads, go to Garden Grove, get a year or so experience, and then come back and see us at that time, and we'll think, we'll give you a position. This is what is occurring at a huge number at our facility. We are hiring only new grads, which is putting a strain on the existing nurses, the nurses that have the expertise, and it also creates an unsafe situation for the patients that we serve. Right now, we are in the process of negotiating a new contract with Mr. Prime Ready. We have been in negotiations in March, since March. Garden Grove called our unit, union, to the table early because they were concerned about the high turnover rate we're having in our facility related to the new grads leaving because of the higher rates that they can get immediately, $10 to $15 more an hour at the surrounding hospitals. So we are constantly having a huge number of turnover and nurses leaving our facility and constantly retraining new nurses. This, as I said, puts a stress on the nurses that have the experience, besides making at times a possibility of unsafe mix of experience versus new grads working and providing safe care to the patients that are seeking their medical care in the community at Garden Grove Hospital. I have been a nurse at Garden Grove Hospital for almost 40 years. I'm finishing up my 39th year now and starting on my 40th, but I'm going to be retiring soon and change my lifestyle. But anyway, when I hired in at Garden Grove almost 40 years ago, I interviewed at three other hospitals in this area. I interviewed at UCI, I interviewed at West Med, and I interviewed at Garden Grove. I was able to choose from those facilities, and I chose Garden Grove Hospital as my home base and have used that as my home throughout my entire career. The reason I chose that hospital is I wanted to work in a small community hospital where I know who I'm talking to when I pick up the phone just by their voice. I like knowing the people I see in the elevator. I like the relationship I can have with my physicians because it's a small community hospital. I like how I see the patients that I take care of out in the community, shopping at restaurants. They'll come up to me, I taught Lamaze class for like 15 years. They'll come up to me and tell me all the time how their babies are doing. Oh, Roberta, you delivered my baby 30 years ago. It's just amazing to have those relationships and to develop those through the course of your career and know what you've given back to the community. Right now, we're in a fight to get fair wages out of our management. Right now, the nurses that are working at Garden Grove are getting 15% less than the nurses that work for Mr. Prime Ready over at West Anaheim. This contract was just negotiated with him less than a year ago, and he, at this point, has been unwilling to match those salaries in your community. It's important that we come here today seeking your support in our fight with creating and maintaining a fair and decent wages for the nurses that are serving you at your community hospital. Like I said, it's been tough working in an environment where you're constantly training because it makes it more difficult. Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
1976, 43 years ago, I was Forty-three years ago, I was 15. Our beautiful country was turning 200 years old. Garden Grove was 20 years old at that time, and they were growing. In West Garden Grove, there was a lot of dirt lots. PUD 102-76-4 was four separate lots at that time. Two commercial, one residential, and one townhome, which is called Townhome. Also, in 1976, in the beautiful Bailey and Tiffany Cross Streets, the five people in the council voted to change .83 acres to office professional from residential. The traffic study was already done for PUD 102-76. So, they did not do a traffic study for SPA 139-76, because it was already done. So, on the corner, Valley View and Tiffany, there is a building, a two-story building. Yet, in the documentation for all the Garden Grove documentation, it shows that the address is 12771 Valley View, but it's not. Well, we're having an issue there on Bailey and Tiffany. On July 11th of this year, I did a citizen's request online. I understand that there was a residence in Garden Grove that suggested that to the city for code violations, and so, therefore, I did it. You know what? On January 11th, I got an email back that says it's opened. And one minute later, it said it was closed. I have not heard one single thing from City Hall or from the code enforcement. I gave them all the documentation I found on the website, and nobody has called me back or emailed me. This is where the problem is. We're having 15 cars parked on Bailey now. They're parking in front of my own house. They're parking next to my neighbor's house. So, if I wanted to go ahead and take my mom, who's 80 years old, to the doctors, I have to wake up before 7:00 to put my truck on the street, so I'm able to get out of her car to take her to the doctors. I had her house recently repainted. I had to wake up early and put both cars out there so the contractors can park in front of the house. I just had the landscape done. I had to wake up early just to park in front of my own house so the landscape people can park in front of the house that they're working on. So, again, documentation on Garden Grove is 12771 Valley View. The true address is 12777. Now, let's talk about that office professional. Friday, I wake up, and I go outside, and there's trash all over the street of Bailey. Took pictures. My neighbor comes out. He goes, "Hey, did you hear what happened last night?" I said, "No." He goes, "10:30, somebody pushed the dumpster out, steam cleaned the dumpster area, and left all the trash on Bailey." So, I went, and he went, to the office professionals. The property management is DWE Real Estate Services. Their number is 877-272-0050. They didn't have to do nothing, because it happened to be street sweeping day, and by the time anybody came out, our Garden Grove street sweepers already picked up the gloves, some kind of fluid, already in the streets. Also, on the same day, on Friday, right after we went to the office professionals, we had six Garden Grove Unified District trucks. I said, "Whoa, why are they all here? There's not even a school around." Well, you know what? I got them. They were walking across the street to On the Rocks. So, I put it on Facebook. The trucks were gone within 15 minutes. So, why would employees of the school district park in a residential area where we're already having problems with vehicles and not park in the parking lot where On the Rocks is? Okay, well. And we're also having problems with panhandlers now that were kicked out of Rite Aid. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Nicholas Dibbs, followed by Robert Harrison thereafter.
Mayor Jones, members of the council. My name is Nicholas Dibbs, longtime resident of Garden Grove, honors graduate of Pacifica High School, and a credentialed science teacher. I also worked in the Garden Grove Unified School District in a number of assignments for over 16 years. I want to follow up. Last time, on the 13th of August, at your last meeting, I brought up the importance of having this brochure, and I want to thank the city manager and the mayor and the council for having this on display downstairs in the lobby at City Hall. And I failed to give each of you a copy. The title is "Net, etc., Chatting With Kids About Being Online." So, it's put out by the Federal Trade Commission, and I gave one last time to the city clerk, but I didn't give one to each of you, so. Okay, now, it was on, I believe it was Tuesday, May 21st, when I first came to this council on the issue of mental health awareness and bringing to the council's attention that teens, young people, the second-leading cause of death among young people is suicide. So, we've had a number of incidents going on, including the recent one at Pacifica High School of hate speech and so on. But on August 21st, as a follow-up to your last meeting, I did a multi-page email asking you to please establish a commission on youth, create a commission on youth and children. The city of Huntington Beach has one. The city of Long Beach has one, and many other cities have a youth commission. We do not. In light of the recent developments at Pacifica High School, as well as some of the problems a prior speaker mentioned about suicide and different things, I think it's important that we, and the internet, and that's what this booklet is about, is helping students and parents to monitor social media activity and reducing the screen time. So, I sent this email to each of you on the 21st of August, asking if you'd please put it on the agenda for some sort of discussion or at least ask the staff to look into possibly having a youth commission and report back to you. It's not on today's agenda, so I'm going to ask that you please put it on for the first meeting in September. And there's a copy for the city clerk and one for each of you. Even though you have it in the email, I'm giving you a hard copy. Okay. So, let's have a youth commission. There's a lot that needs to be done with the youth commission, not only bringing back Youth in Government Day, which I was a part of two years ago to help get that back, but also helping our parents and our young people deal with different issues. And then, I want to bring to the council's attention, which is in the attachment to the email. In April, you passed a proclamation, Child Abuse Prevention Month. And then, in May, you passed a proclamation, Mental Health Awareness Month. Our youth are facing a number of challenges. We need mentoring programs. We need internships, all kinds of things that the city can help facilitate along with the school district, the Orange County Department of Ed, and the County of Orange, and the local businesses. The mayor, over seven years ago, spearheaded the development of the college graduates reception. I'd like to ask the mayor and the council now take the lead on establishing a youth commission for our young people. So, you have that. I hope you'll put it on the agenda. George, you're my representative. If you'll please push this and get it on the agenda for the next meeting for consideration, that would be most helpful. What I do want to bring to your attention is, from the press release before, a student commenting on the BWell OC program. When it comes to mental health and wellness, this is Abby Rose, who's a student at Fountain Valley High School. When it comes to mental health and wellness, I believe teens want to be part of the solution. And BWell OC, she's a BWell OC committee member. As teens, we want to help each other, because we have a unique perspective that may allow us to find solutions to the struggles we see and live every day. So, the city needs to be part of the solution. I'm not here to complain. I'm here to bring ideas and solutions for your consideration. If we can please explore the idea of a youth commission, if one or two of you will put that on the agenda.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Robert Harrison, followed by Diana Athas.
Mayor, council, staff. I'm here to talk about crime in Garden Grove, the ever-increasing crime in our own neighborhood. For about 10 years, we've been holding meetings in our neighborhood with city officials, formal neighborhood watches. Two years in a row, we held National Night Out, and it's always been the crime activity and the parking. And I know that Garden Grove has a problem with giving permit parking. But society is changing. The demographics of our community are changing. The irresponsible politicians are passing laws that put a burden on our community. Letting prisoners out early, you know, a couple of weeks ago, four people were killed. I'm talking about, how can I say, sanctuary policies. I'm talking about the criminal element. I have information, statistics, I can give it to anybody. But over a certain period of time, two, three years, 60,000 criminal illegal immigrants committed murder, rape, child molestation, domestic violence. They were arrested and convicted, and they were let out. And 30,000 of them recommitted murder, rape, child molestation, domestic violence. Why am I repeating this? One murder, one rape, one child molestation, one domestic violence is one too many. And these people are being let back into our communities. Sanctuary policies. Garden Grove needs to look at their policies about issuing permit parking. Our neighborhood has just gone down. Our standard of living has gone down. And in our neighborhood, you know, just say there's 100 neighbors that have cars there. Well, every day, there's probably 200 or more of people that don't live there that are coming into our neighborhood, day and night. And other people are going to talk about the crime. Home break-ins, car break-ins, trash. You get up in the morning in the car that parked there, you can tell that their family ate at In-N-Out Burger. There's drugs, needles, condoms, alcoholic beverages. We have to pick that up. It's not getting any better. Okay. Kim met us and our neighbors graciously, and we talked for a couple hours. She brought some great Garden Grove PD. I mean, I'm glad that they're protecting us. And the thing is, you know, there's not enough cops on the street. You have 50. You should have 80. Maybe seven cops for any tour or whatever covers 17 square miles. It's not enough. And they have to be, any calls are prioritized. You know, of course, you know, a shooting, you're going to go there first, and something less is going to go there later. But we were left after that meeting, you know, no permit parking. It's not going to get any better, and we can do nothing about it. That's not why I'm here, living in Garden Grove. I came here, okay, most of the people, the majority, are law-abiding people. They have homes. They keep them up. And yet, all this criminal element is coming into our neighborhoods, and again, you hear about the crimes from somebody else here. I want to, I know time is limited. I want to go on to another subject. The school, Lamson School, corner of Jettie and Lamson. When the kids go to school in the morning, you walk to the one corner, and they got to cross from that street to another corner. Well, wait a minute. There's all these cars illegally parked there. They have to go out into the street, and my neighbor that's not here seen somebody almost get killed. Okay, we need to do something about them corners. I went to the, oh, I don't have enough time. I went to the school today, and within 15 minutes, or not 15 minutes, about 10 minutes, I took pictures on my cellphone of 10 cars illegally parked in the red. And they don't follow the rule of law. We need to do something about it. We need to get permit parking.
Diana Athas, followed by Jill Frusher.
Good evening. My name's Diana Athas. I'm here to discuss about the many issues in our neighborhood located on Jettie Street and Lamson Avenue that we've been dealing with and becoming worse. It's affecting our quality of our life, the safety of our families, and the families that have children in our neighborhood. We have drug paraphernalia discarded. We have a school and children around where the drug paraphernalia is left. There was even a bloody knife that was left with the drug paraphernalia. And this is occurring in broad daylight, where we're finding that there's also drug deals going on in broad daylight in our neighborhood, which we have called on. My family has personally had three vehicles totaled in front of our house due to speeding coming down through Blue Spruce and then onto our street, crashing into our vehicles that are parked in our street and in front of our home. We've had a home invasion of our neighbor's house, two doors down. Our vehicles are being broken into and things stolen. We have reported these on a continuous basis. There's an increase in foot traffic, not such the good kind that you would see. Parking, our biggest issue, as was stated by Robert. Our house and many others on our street have short driveways. Therefore, we can't park in our driveways. And several years ago, one of the officers stated that we should contact the builder of our homes. Our homes were built in 1959. So, I'm not sure if that person's even still with us to even address the issue of our short driveways. Therefore, we're forced to park out on the street, which is fine. We have trash tossed in the street and the gutters in our neighbor's lawns due to the increase in foot traffic and the insane amount of additional cars from people who do not live in our neighborhood. We have poor lighting in our neighborhood, thus giving the opportunity for crime to occur. Our cul-de-sac seems to be a magnet for people to have sex in their cars. A statement was made at our last neighborhood meeting regarding the parking for the residents, and that the garages are used for hoarding, storage, or we have washers or dryers in the structure that would prohibit us from parking one or two vehicles in our garage. It was a wrongful assumption, implying that the families in our neighborhood use the garages for such things other than a vehicle. What we are asking for you is to grant us the same parking permits that all of the surrounding cities of Garden Grove already do. From this, you would receive revenue from such parking offenses, poor cars parking when they shouldn't be. Thank you for your time.
Jill, and then followed by Dustin Nguyen.
Hi, good evening. Hi. I came with my friends from Jettie Street, and so, I wrote down what I wanted to say. But I wanted to add in, you know, when we had the home invasion about a year ago, where the poor young man happened to be home, and it made the news where the thieves... the poor young man happened to be home, and it made the news where the thieves ran into one yard and the other one ran into mine, and my son said, "Don't come home." "What?" Anyway, and the other neighbor on the corner of our cul-de-sac. And then regarding the parking situation, because the police had urged us to go ahead and call on illegally parked cars, we have four cul-de-sacs that are, you know, off of my street. I live on the corner of Jettie and Heather Circle, and from the 22nd to the 26th, I did call on seven different vehicles, and the police were great. So I'm keeping my pad by my window. So, anyway, but I wanted to talk to you about, if I can just go ahead and read, I said, "Good evening. I requested a turn to speak with you tonight on behalf of our neighborhood of Jettie Street and Lamson Avenue, and the issues my friends talked about, but I would like to speak with you about the lack of curb ramps." You know, those are for handicap access at, excuse me, as well as the potentially dangerously aging curb corners of our neighborhood. Jettie Street borders Lamson Avenue, as my friend Bob mentioned, and has curb ramps at both major street corners, again, with the red, but whatever, there are handicap access. Anyway, and those, you know, assist pedestrians crossing Lamson to get to Lamson Elementary across the street. Okay, beyond the corner of Lamson and Jettie, there are zero curb ramps. Okay? I have lived in our neighborhood for the better part of 49 years, after my parents purchased our family home at 12592 Jettie Street in 1970. There have never been curb ramps at any corners in our neighborhood beyond the major corners in my recollection. I feel it's high time to investigate as correcting this issue and enable our community to finally come under ADA complaints in our neighborhood. I retired from teaching kindergarten at Santa Anita Unified last year, so I've had time on my hands. So, I read up on the ADA requirements online, then was able to connect, because it's a lot, but they had a toll-free line. I called a technical rep who directed me to our municipality rep, that's City Engineer Dan Candelaria. I'm like, "Yes." And then I had a cordial conversation with Mr. Candelaria the other day, in which Mr. Candelaria and I looked up our street on Google Maps. We both noted how some of the corners of cul-de-sacs also have dangerously aged concrete that has cracked and are accidents waiting to happen. And again, after having retired from teaching public school kindergarten, kids need to get outside. I've been measuring, yeah. Anyway, I noted one corner in especially bad repair at 12652, sorry, 12652 Jettie at Sandalwood Circle. I have a picture if you can, I can maybe email it to you guys later. According to our neighbor friends at that address, the city apparently made repairs to the corner in the early 2000s in applying some asphalt to the gaps in the concrete. Now, in late 2019, it looks dangerous. And so I did say, "As a retired kindergarten teacher, I feel that these hazards are dangerous to children and elderly residents alike." And in summation, we need repair as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dustin Nguyen, followed by Bonnie Crawford.
Good evening, Mayor Jones, council members in Garden Grove. I'm Dustin Nguyen, and I'm here tonight to give my perspective as a Christian and lay leader in the Episcopal Church. Just as my Lord Jesus Christ was a humble craftsman who stood beside the poor, I'm preaching in the people's pulpit tonight to champion economic justice for the many, not the few. As the shadow of high living costs, scarce affordable housing, homelessness, and displacement persistently looms over our low-income and working-class neighbors of color, it is unholy to knowingly turn our backs when God has endowed us with the capacity to help through Willowick Golf Course. For me, this is more than just an economic issue. This is a pro-life issue. The dignity of human life doesn't vanish once a child leaves the womb. Whether a fetus later grows into a migrant child in a cage, an LGBTQ teen disowned by their family, a transit in an encampment, or an alien hiding from immigration authorities, life continues to have dignity. And this dignity extends no less to our vulnerable, low-income, and working-class neighbors. The median income of the Santa Anita neighborhood surrounding Willowick is $46,000 a year, dramatically lower than the Orange County median income of $92,700. As encroaching commercial development threatens to price our neighbors out of their own homes, as withering open and green spaces presents a public health concern, I contemplate from my faith tradition the 25th chapter of Matthew's Gospel, where Jesus warns, "Whatever you did not do for one of the least of these brothers and sisters of mine, you did not do for me." As a disciple of Jesus Christ, I stand in prophetic solidarity with the Rise Up Willowick Coalition to demand socially responsible development of Willowick's 102 acres, providing resources, affordable housing, and recreational spaces that elevate the quality of life for our low-income neighbors who are Christ's beloved. As we speak, the flames of greed and gluttony are out of control in the Amazon rainforest, wreaking irreversible damage to God's creation. This is a desperate reminder that we must be more responsible stewards of the resources God has entrusted to us, and Willowick is our opportunity. The day when love for our neighbor becomes the building block and chief cornerstone of Garden Grove is the day when righteousness shines as the noonday sun, the day when we become what St. Augustine called "a city of God" and what Jesus called "a city upon a hill." In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Bonnie Crawford. I'm a longtime member, along with my husband, of the community. We graduated in class of 1968 from Garden Grove High School and have raised children here and grandchildren, and we're active, we're involved, we try to give back. I have two items I'm going to speak to, 7A and 7B, and I've written them out just so that I can be really quick on time. First, on 7A, I'd like to thank Mayor Pro-Tam Stephanie Klavenstein for organizing a meeting in the spring so that the community could be involved in here, possible solutions in terms of the coyotes, and also have a chance to just vent their concerns. However, I find that I no longer allow my grandchildren play outside. I don't allow my pets to be outside. I really feel like I'm a hostage in my house because I'm afraid of the coyotes that are running loose. We're told to haze them, but I've also read that really there's no real support to tell you that that hazing works. I've heard it from people in the wildlife group that say, "Well, we think this might help," but really, there's no active data that says that it does work. Every day on Facebook, I see a posting, particularly in West Garden Grove, on a school where there's a coyote. There's a picture. There's a coyote at Bell School. There's a coyote at another school. We have children going back to school this week. I'm really concerned. I feel that we must take action. We need to take action on what's being proposed tonight, and we need to go further. We can't just keep our residents hostage in their homes because of the coyotes. We have plenty of data already. We know what they do. We know where they're at. We've got a mess across the street from Garden Grove Unified School District. There's a property there that's not taken care of. There's dens of coyotes in there. There's coyotes seen going in and out on a regular, daily basis. I urge you to take action on doing something to make our community safe, and once again, be able to let our children go outside and our pets. On 7B, with all due respect, in the time that we've moved to districts and being represented, I have to say that, other than reelection, we have never, ever heard from the person that represents us in District 4. I'm sorry, Councilman Bowie, we have not had any communications. But I look at the $5,000, and I say, "Well, then, how will that be determined?" To me, it looks like something that's going to be very divisive for the community. People are going to be very unhappy because they're going to see something that happens in one district, doesn't happen in another. We need to bring our community together. We cannot afford to have things that'll split apart our community. We already have too many problems. We've got to be together. Thank you.
Okay, so that concludes oral communications, and we will now recess to other agency business. So we'll go to successor agency. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Here.
Member O'Neill?
Here.
Member Tuho Nguyen?
Yeah.
Member Klavenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Vice Chair Bowie?
Yeah.
And Chair Jones?
Here.
Okay, we already did oral communications simultaneously with City Council. Move on to consent items. Just receive and file. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Matters from agency members? Seeing none, we will recess to the Sand District.
Turn on my mic there first. We've already done, could you please call the roll?
Member Bowie?
All right.
Yeah.
Member Jones?
Here.
Member Klavenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Member Tuho Nguyen?
Here.
Vice President Brightigam?
Here.
And President O'Neill?
Here.
Thank you. So we've already done oral communications. I have some consent items here. These can be handled together. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion on those? All right, call for the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Any matters regarding sanitary? Okay. We'll adjourn to the next meeting on September 24th. Back to City Council.
Go back to City Council, reconvene, and we'll go to consent items. It's recommended that 3A through 3H be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull an item. Any polls? Motion?
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you. Go on to public hearings. We do have two tonight, so 4A.
Item 4A is approval of substantial amendment number one to the 2019-20 Annual Action Plan for the Use of Housing and Urban Development Funding. And Mr. Robbins is here to give the report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. We're here tonight to conduct a public hearing regarding substantial amendment number one to the City of Garden Grove's fiscal year 1920 Annual Action Plan and to transmit the substantial amendment number one of the action plan to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, otherwise known as HUD. The City of Garden Grove annually receives entitlement grants from three HUD funding sources, including annual home and CDBG grants. On March 26, 2019, the City Council adopted the fiscal year 1920 Action Plan, which includes the use of home and CDBG funds for the period from July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. HUD regulations require a substantial amendment be made to the action plan if any activity to be carried out was not included in the originally approved plan. This substantial amendment proposes to add two activities to the 1920 Action Plan, which were not contemplated at the time the original plan was approved. Those activities are the Homeless Emergency Assistance and Rental Transition Program, otherwise known as HART, and the Labanita Storm Drain Project. The first of those, I spoke about earlier in the night, so I won't rehash that, but that's the 12-month rental assistance program for literally homeless individuals. And then the second item on that list is the Labanita Storm Drain Project, which is funded in part with $471,000 in CDBG funds and began construction in fiscal year 1819. The project was anticipated to be completed during the same program year, thus it wasn't included in the 1920 Action Plan. However, the completion of the project was delayed and therefore must now be included in the action plan via substantial amendment. The Labanita Storm Drain improvements have already been budgeted, and funds have been allocated to this activity previously. Therefore, there's no impact to the general fund or to other activities. Staff recommends the Council conduct a public hearing and accept public comments regarding proposed substantial amendment number one to the 1920 Action Plan, and to recommend transmission of the substantial amendment number one to HUD. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Nate. Any questions to staff before we open the public hearing? Okay. Seeing none, we will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this particular item? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Council members?
Second.
Call the vote.
How did that happen? I'm getting a yes and a no from you. I got a yes and a no. Motion received, seven yes votes.
Oh. Huh? Oh. Okay.
Okay, thank you. 4B.
4B is adoption of a resolution approving the issuance of bonds by the Golden State Finance Authority for the benefit of Sun Grove Garden Grove ARLP to assist with the financing of an existing 82-unit senior affordable housing project, Sun Grove Senior Apartments, located at 12811 Garden Grove Boulevard. And Mr. Robbins is here to give the report.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, we're here tonight to conduct a public hearing, for a TEFRA hearing. This project was actually brought before the Council back in September of 2018 to conduct a public hearing for a TEFRA hearing. The 12-month grace period for the TEFRA hearing has expired due to some unforeseen delays, so we're going to do another one tonight. So we're here tonight to conduct a public hearing under the requirements of the Federal Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, or TEFRA. TEFRA requires that a public hearing be held by the governing body of the jurisdiction in which a project to be financed with tax-exempt financing or bonds is located, and that the governing body approve the proposed financing by adoption of the City Council Resolution included with this agenda report. Sun Grove Garden Grove ARLP, as the borrower and developer, proposes to obtain tax-exempt financing through the bonds in an amount not to exceed $12 million to finance the acquisition, substantial rehabilitation, and equipping of an existing 82-unit senior rental housing project located at 12811 Garden Grove Boulevard in the City of Garden Grove. It's called the Sun Grove Senior Apartments. The issuer of the bonds will be the Golden State Finance Authority, or GSFA, a joint powers authority formed to assist local governments, nonprofit organizations, and businesses with the issuance of both taxable and tax-exempt bond financing. The city is a member of the GSFA. The bonds and the repayment of this debt to be issued by the GSFA will be and remain the sole responsibility and liability of the developer, Sun Grove Garden Grove ARLP, and neither the city nor the housing authority will have any financial or legal obligations, liabilities, or responsibilities with regard to the repayment of the bonds. All bond financing and related financial documents will carry disclaimers that the Garden Grove, excuse me, that the bonds and such debt are no obligations of the city or the housing authority. Garden Grove will also bear no cost in the issuance of the proposed debt. In effect, this is a private loan with the borrower and their bank. Additionally, adoption of the proposed City Council Resolution is solely for the purposes of satisfying their requirements of TEFRA, the IRS Code, and California Government Code Section 6500. The City Council's adoption of this resolution will approve issuance by GSFA of the tax-exempt bonds and is in no way an approval of the proposed project. All agreements and instruments that the city and/or the housing authority will be a part to or a beneficiary of or otherwise pertain to this project will be brought before and reviewed and considered by the City Council or the housing authority as applicable. It's recommended that the City Council conduct a public hearing to receive and consider public comments, whether for, against, or neutral, to the proposed financing, and after the hearing to consider adoption of the City Council Resolution included with the agenda report. The resolution will approve the issuance of bonds by the GSFA for the benefit of Sun Grove Garden Grove ARLP and appropriate any donated funds into the fiscal year 1920 budget for the project. This concludes my report, and I can answer any questions that you might have.
Questions? Okay, it's a public hearing item, so we'll open it. Anyone here to speak on this particular item? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Colleagues? Call the vote. I believe, now we move on to items for consideration. I believe 5A is the one that we already did concurrently with, or simultaneously with housing authorities, so that's already complete. 5B.
Item 5B is adoption of a resolution of intention to vacate the southern portion of Brady Way, Garden Grove, and setting the time and place for a public hearing. And Mr. Sandoval will be giving the staff report.
And Mr. Sandoval will be giving the staff report tonight.
Mayor, members of the City Council, before you is the resolution declaring your intention to vacate the southern portion of Brady Way and set a public hearing for your second meeting in, I look at the resolution here, second meeting in September, for the public hearing to consider the vacation of that portion of Brady Way in order to terminate its public street designation and subsequently possible disposition of that area to the adjacent property owner to the west, I'm sorry, to the east. This is the first step in the vacation process. You basically need to adopt this resolution. It will be posted. Public hearing notice will be published in a newspaper as well, and that will give us an opportunity for the City Council to then hold a public hearing and consider the actual vacation of the street. The vacation of the street and its subsequent disposition will be a win-win for the city. Both the property owner to the east is proposing to use that area for additional parking and access to their property in order to expand the former next-level sports facility, make it a larger building, and provide additional parking. In addition to that, the property owners to the west of Brady Way do complain because that portion of the street goes to nowhere. It ends at the 22. It's a cul-de-sac. It's dark, and there's dumping and other illegal activities going on in that area. So by being able to close that portion of the street and transfer it to private hands, it will, it would basically allow for the property to be more secure, and again, it would be a win-win for the city and its residents. This is the, again, resolution, is just the resolution intention that schedules and says the public hearing, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Please.
I really don't have a question. I don't know if anybody else has any questions. I only have a comment that this, like council has said, this is a win-win. I don't think a week goes by, maybe two sometimes, but I get at least two or three texts, emails, "Hey, when is this going to be closed off?" When is it, you know, the neighbors there are, you know, for decades have been really, this has been a problem over there for them with, you know, kids going and drinking there at night and people going and using drugs and whatnot. So I think this is one of those rare times where it's a win for the community, a win for the city, and a win for the developer, you know, so it's kind of good to be in that. So with that, I'll make a motion.
Call the vote.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
All righty. Takes us on to readings. We have two second readings tonight, 6A and 6B. 6A.
Okay. Item 6A is the second reading of ordinance number 2907 entitled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Approving Planned Unit Development Number PUD 104818690 Revised 2019, Amending the General Use and Development Standards for Planned Unit Development Number PUD 1048186 Revised 92, Reduce the Required Minimum Parking Area Landscape Setback for Area 3E.
Any questions, comments? Otherwise, I'll move it. Call the vote.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
6B.
6B is second reading of ordinance number 2908 entitled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Amending Chapter 860 of Title 8, the Garden Grove Municipal Code relating to alarm systems.
Moved.
Second. Call the vote.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
So it's going to take us on to matters next, but I suggest why don't we take a quick five-minute break? Okay, we are now on to matters from mayor and city council members. So we do have two listed items, so we'll go on to 7A.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Just a couple of quick comments on this item. Obviously, we've all had lots of comments about coyotes. We've gotten lots of emails, text messages, and so I want to thank the council members at the last council meeting, I think, or a couple ago, for really kind of bearing down on us a little bit to work on this issue. We've, I want to thank Bill Murray and his staff. I want to thank Maria Stipe for doing a lot of work on this issue. Chief DeRay has waved in on it. We've had a lot of discussions internally about this issue. As we talk about our coyote management plan, we've borrowed liberally from some other cities that have done some good things, most notably Anaheim has done some work on, in this area and some other cities. So with that, I will turn the presentation over to Mr. Murray, who will kind of walk us through the project plan that we put together.
Thank you, Mr. Stiles. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as requested by council members Clovenstein and Bowie, staff has prepared a coyote management plan that provides options for addressing various coyote interactions. The coyote management plan is attached to your staff report. The coyote issue is fairly new to Garden Grove, with sightings and reports of missing pets dating back to 2010. In 2013, the city held a special meeting to address this issue, and Maureen quit testing me, teching me. Okay, in 2013, the city held a special meeting to address the issue, which resulted in actions being taken to address the problem. These actions held the coyote problem in check until a few years ago, when residents began reporting sightings and missing pets, again, on a consistent basis. The key difference is now is the city, with this problem, is it's now citywide. In 2013, the coyotes were predominantly located on the west side of the city. Staff has notified the residents via our City Works Mailer, city website, and social media about the threat posed by coyotes and also provided the public with the state-recommended best practice, best management practices for dealing with the coyotes. Those best management practices are listed in your staff report for your review. Additionally, community meetings have been held to educate the residents on coyotes, as well as press releases also issued during high-activity periods. Unfortunately, these actions have been, have not been enough to stem the tide of coyote sightings and reported pet attacks. The coyote management plan addresses all levels of coyote interactions and provides details on how to address each circumstance. Should council approve the coyote management plan tonight, staff can begin addressing coyote-related activities as prescribed in the plan as soon as possible. This concludes staff's report. This concludes staff's report, and we're available if you have any questions.
I'm May. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Murray, for your detailed report and your work and help on this issue. I feel like I've been deep in this coyote issue for some time. This dates back to February 2019. Obviously, this has blown up on our social media channels, people concerned, different sightings throughout the community, different issues. The Garden Grove Neighbor Association hosted a community meet on Main at that time to talk about best practices, what can be done. Obviously, a lot has happened since then, but I think it gave residents a window into just how big this issue is and what we can possibly do. At the last council meeting, myself, and I know my colleague, Fat Bowie, also talked about what can we do as a city, and what kind of plan of action we can come up with. I talked a lot about being proactive, not reactive, and the importance of outreach and education. And I also want to thank Commissioner Bonnie Crawford for bringing to my attention what Anaheim is doing, and I think how that has played into some of the efforts that we have put together. I advocated for a plan, and so I want to thank staff for their diligent effort in putting that together. I think this report really does hit some key points, threat levels, do's and don'ts, tips. Obviously, again, that key outreach and education component, and ultimately, I think, gives us a game plan to follow. And so I really urge the residents to read through the report in its entirety. I think that's, that's very important. And when we talk about outreach and education, as the trustee for vector control, I'm always giving the message of dumping draining or standing water in the, with a threat of these mosquitoes that are carrying West Nile virus. Well, it's the same with the coyotes. Obviously, we want to make sure that we have swift action and quite a few options on the table, but I do feel that outreach and education is key. And so with this coyotes, we need to be looking at different options, such as clearing debris, taking care of our properties, removing food sources, whether that be trash, our pet bowls and water, our food, don't leave them out overnight, take preventative measures, don't leave your pets out overnight. I think there's a cycle of information that we need to really be listening to and make sure that we're doing that. We're taking some ownership in our own, in our own neighborhoods and in our homes as to what can be done. And I can't really highlight enough the importance of the hotline. I appreciate everyone reporting on Facebook and sharing their stories. I get that you want that camaraderie. This is happening to me, too, and I think that that's fair. But the problem is, is that as a city, we're not, we're not taking the data from Facebook, we're taking it from the hotline, which is 714-741-5286. Please call the hotline. You want to put it on social media, that's fine, but call the hotline, because that's where we're going to grab our data from. That's where we're going to look at the city as a whole and plot out where the coyotes are being seen and say, hey, you know what? We've got a real problem in this area here. Or, this is where we saw that coyote that was snarling at somebody on this street. Okay, that, that's an action point. That's a place that we need to invest some additional time in. So I can't, I can't stress enough the importance of calling that hotline first. Make that your first move, and then put it on Facebook. I'd also like to highlight a few other things that I think are important. I've talked to Scott Styles and city staff about creating some information sheets, some fact sheets, similar to what Anaheim is doing, just to give people, just some real bullet points of what they can do and what we're doing. And hopefully, we can put those on our website, social media channels, maybe have them here at council meetings, at the library, different public places where I think coyotes have been seen. I don't think we should look or not take into account the idea of partnerships, maybe partnering with other cities that also have action plans. I think Anaheim's a great example. They have a very aggressive and comprehensive plan, and it never hurts to partner with our surrounding cities as we move forward. Another idea, obviously, is working closely with code enforcement. They're a big part of the cleanup efforts. If we clean up the derelict properties, that just removes one more area for a coyote to hide and possibly create a den. So that's important. And I'd also like to work with public works and city staff on maybe changing some of our trash can receptacles. I think that there are some new ideas and innovative ways to house the trash, different kinds of lids that maybe we could use to keep the coyotes from going in there. They can smell the trash from a mile or so away. So if we keep the trash cleaned up and maybe change the way we're housing the trash, that might be another way to keep them, keep them at bay. So obviously, again, please read the report. I think, I think it's a detailed plan. I think it's a great first step. Look it over, and I will continue to work closely on this issue.
Thank you.
Well, I think, why, I think the city and staff have done the good stuff to, to be more proactive, but my concern is, a lot of the resident are very frightened, they're still afraid. We just got a few more reports about other sighting of coyote in the west Garden Grove, and people are afraid. So I think it is very important that we, you know, whatever we do here, the bottom line count, does people see the reduced number of coyote out on, on the streets? Do we see the number of dogs, of cat being, you know, the reduction of dog and cat being killed by coyote? The people see less sighting of them and make them afraid. If the answer is no, then I think we did, we did not do our services to the residents. No matter how good, how comprehensive a plan that we put in place, if the answer to those questions that I just mentioned earlier is no, then we got to, we got to do better than that. We heard our resident throughout this evening and at many other evenings about parking issues that become insane for them. We heard their cry about, you know, being surrounded by drug addicts, drug sales. We heard about this issue. And if our answer is our hand is tied, so we cannot do much more than that, then I think, I think we, you know, we, you know, we let our resident that. So this is a good step forward, but I would like to monitor it.
Absolutely.
And I would like to see the number of, I would like you to provide us the statistics. And just as Councilman Klothenstein mentioned earlier, please, you know, call the hotline number so that we can try and see whether this method worked or doesn't work. If it doesn't work, then we need to go back to the rolling block and figure out what else can we do. I cannot, I cannot take the answer that, hey, this is all we can do. One other thing that I want to make sure that we explain to the public, and I saw that in the report, it is, it is against the law to shoot at the coyote. So somehow, resident had, out of their first question, threatened to shoot the coyote if they, if they feel threatened by it. We need to communicate that to our resident more clearly so that they understand that if they do that, they may be fined.
I think that if we take this plan and enact what we have created here, I think the residents will hold us accountable and let us know if it's not enough. You're living and breathing it every day, just as I am and the rest of us up here. We see them. I've had them in my yard, too. So I think we need to let this plan of action take place, and we will know if it's working or not working. But I think this is a good first step. There's always things that can be tweaked and changed along the way. Again, as I mentioned, partnerships and so forth. I think there's a lot of things that can be done, but we have to start somewhere. And personally, I'm just happy to see us taking a proactive approach and putting together a plan at this time. I'd like to make a motion if nobody has any further comments.
Well, I was gonna add, and maybe you'll be receptive to this, that, because with that motion, I'd like to add in an application of a semi-annual update of council, so we can kind of get the statistics that Councilman Bowie's wanting. We can kind of get an idea every six months, are we progressing in the right, I mean, I get the public's gonna hold us accountable, but I think we, we need to hold ourselves accountable a little bit, and we can't do that without an update, at least bi, or, you know, maybe annually, but I'm guessing every six months is fair, at least we can get an idea of what the numbers are, if they're going up or down. So I would add that to your motion, that we get a biannual update.
I'm comfortable with that.
Can I also ask staff to see if we can include this plan in the water bill that we send out to each household?
I think the plan's a little large to fit in there. It's 23 pages long.
I think we can put it on the website, and I think it'll be shareable that way. Yeah.
We can put a link to it.
Can we, and we put a roadmap in the water bill that refer to the website?
Certainly. Yeah, we could put a link in there.
I thought I should put the hotline number, both, so people actually can see the number.
It's been in there several times.
I just want to say it's a great start to have a plan. We didn't have a plan before, and everybody was kind of second-guessing everybody, who's doing what, nobody kind of knew. So we have a plan now, and there's an elevated plan. If things got out of control with the coyotes, you know, we have level green, yellow, and red, so you could read through that, and it gives us the authority to do what we need to do to protect the residents and their animals. So that's the key function of this. But a lot of it moving forward is the education and getting the plan out there, so I like it.
We have a motion and a second. Call for it.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
On to item seven B.
Item seven B is a draft policy outlining the spending and reporting guidelines of potential district budget allocation funds within the city council contingency account, as requested by the city council. And Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Park is here to give the report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. At the August 13th, 2019 city council meeting, the Garden Grove City Council discussed the idea of implementing an annual city council budget appropriation whereby each council member, including the mayor, could be allotted a set amount of dollars to utilize within their respective districts and citywide. Upon receiving information on the practices of neighboring cities in Orange County, the city council directed staff to draft a comprehensive policy outlining specific spending guidelines, reporting practices, and transparency measures, should the city council decide to move forward with the budget, district budget allocations. City staff researched existing policies of neighboring cities and incorporated the recommendations of the city council in order to draft a comprehensive policy, which you have in front of you today. The draft policy outlines specific criteria for the appropriate use of the funds, procedures for the administration of the funds, as well as transparency measures for the regulations of funds. There is no additional financial impact should the city council wish to implement district budget allocations within the city council contingency account. And with that, it is recommended that the city council consider this report and provide direction to staff. That concludes this report, and staff is available to answer any questions, and is also available to read that policy should the city council like that. Thank you.
For starters, any questions or clarifications with regard to the staff report? Okay. Where, where do we start with this? Who wants to go?
Well, I, I don't have a problem with it. I think a lot of it's gotten out of proportion a little bit. I mean, it's, it's just a way for a district council person to do maybe, you know, a neighborhood meeting or something like that, maybe give us more incentive to do things more often. I see Anaheim budgeting millions of dollars to do community outreach and neighborhood outreach by district, so I think, you know, it's new to us, the districts are fairly new, so, and, and with this low amount, I don't have any problem with it, so.
Similar to Councilman O'Neill, one of the things that you realize and becomes very, very frustrating when you get elected, is how slow it takes to get anything accomplished. You got your district chiming at you, it's that, and, and even, you know, just holding a community coffee, spending 50 bucks on coffee, you know, takes weeks in advance, and a vote of the council, and, you know, I mean, just, it's ridiculous, just so much as, one of the things I considered was having an artist, one of the local artists, come out and decorate some of the electrical boxes along the roads on Chapman and Lamson and over there off of Beach Boulevard, similar to what they did around here. And, you know, very low expense of things, it does benefit the community. You shouldn't have to wait months and months to get something like this approved. And, you know, the community elected us. Just trying to get things done is, is hard enough, and for such a minor amount of money, I mean, we're talking, you know, $5,000 and a $250 million budget, it's a very minimal amount of money we're talking about. We've got now some really good constraints that I think everybody chimed in on, as far as, you know, not using names on mailers and stuff like that, although I don't think you can actually put out a mailer for five grand, but at least we have that as a rule. So with that being said, I'm, I'm pretty favorable to this as well, and I'm, and I'm hoping, you know, we can do this. If not, then it, it allows us to actually do things for our communities in a expedited manner and not have to drag our feet in molasses, so to speak, to get anything done, at least the minor things.
Who wants to go next?
Well, I would like to make some comment before we make a motion to vote on it. I heard a couple of comment from concerned residents, some supported, others have some concerns. One of the concerns that I generally hear is it divide the city council instead of, you know, unite, unite us all. And they're also concerned about misappropriate use of this fund for, you know, to, to advance a particular council effort. I think that even though it is given the budget to, to a district, but it doesn't mean that it will cause us division among us. For example, my district, District Four, happen to include Main Street, which is neighboring District Three of Councilman Klothenstein. And so from time to time, and because it is also downtown, given that it is, is downtown Garden Grove, from time to time, we may work with other city council member to join effort together, so that maybe we could use a few hundred dollar from each district to do something together. Likewise, I'm also bothering with District Three of Councilman Tu Hang Wuen, and from time to time, she may want to ask me to join her in some program that might benefit the people from District Three and District Four, because we only divided by, by process. We have a lot of thing in common. And so I think it, it not necessarily cause division among, among us, but in fact, it may foster collaboration and working together. So I think I would like to, you know, take this opportunity to assure the resident who are concerned about it cause division among us. I think it's, it's not the case here. And also Mayor Steve Jones, the original suggestion is the mayor have a little bit bigger pocket, but he's very, very good in, in doing the same with, with other council member, and from time to time, maybe Mayor Jones and all six of us will pull the, the fund together to do something that, that might, you know, might be good for all resident in Garden Grove, like they'll reimagine things. If he needs some help from us, we would chip in to help. So I think that that should, that we should rather sure that that is not the case here. In term of misappropriating the fund that given us, it's only $5,000. And like Councilman Prestonham said, to send out mailers, it costs a lot of money. Anyone who run for, for council know that it costs, easily costs eight, nine thousand dollars just to send out one piece of mailer alone. So I don't think we would ever want to, to do that. And if we misuse it, the city manager and the management, city management will, will caution us that we, we might think twice about, about doing it. And we have to be transparent, so the resident will know very quickly how much we use, what it is for, and why we're doing it. So if, if, if any of us misuse it, we will have to answer to our constituents, and very soon election come, we will And very soon election come, we will, you know, they will put pressure on us and I don't think we want to do that. So just want to clarify and explain to everyone.
You know, in theory, at a high level, I look at this and I think, okay, this would be good. But then when I kind of drill into it a little bit and I think about five thousand dollars, I guess in the grand scheme of things, isn't a lot of money. But there actually is a lot you could do with five thousand dollars. And some of it might really tick off one of your colleagues. And then we have internal fighting over it. And we're warring with each other because one of us did something in our district that the rest of us doesn't like. Or because we border so closely together, somebody does something right along that border that really upsets the other person. And then there's fighting. I think we work really well together as a team. I think our ideas and our overall view is for the betterment of the city. And I would hate to see something like this, five thousand dollars potentially blow that apart. I also see an issue with if we start picking little things to do or somebody comes to us and says, hey, I have a great idea for you to do some public art here, or I'd like a coffee over here. And then suddenly, all these different groups and all these different neighborhoods and all these different people come asking for something. I don't want to have to be the one to say, oh, sorry, I'm going to pick them instead of you. That's a really tough place to be in. And, you know, as I said to my colleague, we're not the Make-A-Wish Foundation. That just gets really sticky because I want to help everybody. But if I only have five thousand dollars, that's not going to be possible. And everybody's going to want a little piece of that money. And I personally think there are ways for us to do things in the community with the way we have things structured now. I don't think any of us have really used the money that's there for specific things in the district. And maybe we can champion staff to say, hey, can we make it work quicker? Can you help expedite this? How can we make this happen faster if we want a certain timeline? I feel like we should be able to come to staff, Scott, whomever, and say, hey, I have this great idea in my district, but I don't want to wait two months. I need this within three weeks. How can I make this happen? Money's there, so let's do it. I just think that these are things we need to think about and issues that give me pause in looking at this, this particular item.
Thank you. Can we hear from others maybe still?
I stand by my comments from the last meeting when this was discussed. Some of my concerns were addressed in the policy. But I don't think that it satisfies all of my concerns. I would have preferred to see some sort of application processes for individuals who are interested in receiving quote unquote grants from us to do whatever it is that they want to do out on their community. Then that way it's transparent. Everyone gets notified that these monies are available and then they can apply for it. It makes it a competitive but yet fair approach to this. I don't like that we get to decide which ones we get to do. I think that that, piggybacking off of Councilmember Klaufenstein, that that will cause a lot of problems in the future. I don't think that we've had any big issues with wanting to do certain things in our district. Staff has been very amenable in helping us achieve whatever goals we're looking at or whatever areas we want to focus on. So I stand by my comments from the previous meeting.
Well, just want to change as well. In the past three years since I was elected, I don't think we have any issue in term of allocate the fund or especially when we reach out to staff for spending. So it's not necessary to have allocate fund five thousand for each district because we've been working so well together. The second thing is I have to commend all the staff. I mean, they spend a lot of time to put everything together and I really appreciate that. And for the past, especially for the past three years, when I have any question, especially projects or any expense, I reach out to Scott and the staff. They respond very quickly and help us, help me to be able to, you know, allocate the fund or spending in the right way without compromising, you know, jeopardizing any regulation. So for me, I'm still standing my pungent fears. I don't think it's necessary to actually having, you know, dividing the fund among the districts.
Can I ask? Can I comment? Oh, you want to comment first?
I think I might as well jump in. And I've been sort of picking up comments from our colleagues and whatnot over the last few weeks. I always try and be as open minded as I can when colleagues bring something forward. And so I want to be respectful and I don't think it's a bad idea. It's just I think I don't particularly see a problem here that needs to be solved with a new policy, I think, to Councilmember Tu Haas comments. You know, we work together well. If we've got a good idea, just share it and we'll find a way to fund it and we'll get it done. And it doesn't necessarily have to take months if it's a simple, good idea. You got an art project, we've got an art fund. You got a reimagine project, those are bigger and take more time. But, you know, we've applied for grant funding to cover those for the most part. There's different mechanisms. But I think there's a lot of, in my mind, there's a lot more downsides to this than upside in propensity for politics to get involved, propensity for spending money that otherwise wouldn't necessarily get spent. Like right now, we've got this city council budget is, and we're just talking about sort of dividing it into pieces and it's there already anyways. And we don't necessarily use it. We could tap into it. All you got to do is sort of bring it up with your colleagues. I would just encourage more kind of communication amongst ourselves. Say, hey, I really got this thing I want to do in my district and this art project or whatnot. Can we get behind it? And then we contemplate it together. I think these things can move quickly. I don't think there's necessarily a lot of red tape involved. But if we did go forward on this, on something like this, I think it would take a lot of checks and balances, a lot of conditions, and just a way to kind of make it work to try and foresee all the things that could go wrong by implementing it as opposed to not. So my preference would be to just sort of try over the next year to introduce ideas in the absence of this kind of a policy and just see if we can be respectful and cordial with each other and encourage, you know, seeing individual ideas pop up within districts, but without the formality of having to create a new policy that could potentially be flawed or have repercussions.
Well, however, we, you know, whatever vehicle we use to accomplish it, I think I don't have any issue with that. The thing that I'm trying to solve when George bring this idea up is I'm thinking of various things in my district that I would like to improve. For example, my district have a lot of graffiti issue in certain neighborhood in my district. And residents complain to me a lot, but city doesn't fix graffiti. City only, you know, go after the owner to have it, you know, removed. And so I was thinking, and it doesn't work because if they repaint it and then in a few days, you know, it happened again. So, but it's only happened in certain area in my district. So I thought with this, if I have this fund, then perhaps I can, you know, put together some volunteers, give them paints, and they would go out and, you know, remove the graffiti much faster than the way the city would do. Normally, the way the city would do is someone have to report the graffiti to the city hotline or website. And then the city will then try to, you know, send a letter to the owner of that property and make, give them like two weeks to take care of it. And so by then, you know, it's difficult to reduce the level of graffiti in my district. If I have this little fund, I could just form a volunteer in my district. And whenever they see a graffiti, they could go out there and put it out almost very quickly. That way it discourage the group that put graffiti on my neighborhood, you know, less, you know, intention to do it. But if I don't have this funding, that's fine. I will just have to find different way to do it. Perhaps if I bring it up to the city council that I ask for, hey, can I have, I don't know how much, but let's say a thousand dollars to use it for my district to take care of the graffiti problem issue? If that is a vehicle that we want to use to accomplish that, then I have no issue.
I want to jump in on that one just real quick, primarily just because I think graffiti is a citywide issue and requires a citywide solution that we should all be part of. And so as not to disparage that department, we have a very active and vibrant graffiti removal team. They've got trucks and fancy, you know, sprares and stuff like that. And the only-
That's not what I heard. The city policy, that was old day. Nowadays, it's up to the property owner to take care of the graffiti themselves.
We've got a very vibrant graffiti removal team and whenever public spaces are graffitied, they're on it and they do it. They don't necessarily do it on private property because it's private property. And if somebody came in and just painted your house tan one day, you might be upset. You might like it, you might be upset. You'd probably be upset that the city came in and painted your private property a different color. So I think it's incumbent upon, you know, that may be a policy we could consider is with private property owners' permission, could we, would we want to expend city funds to address graffiti issues on private property with private property? It's a whole different discussion, but it's a citywide discussion. That's my point. It's not a district thing.
To help with those things.
We have a budget for that.
But even if you got a group together to go out, you'd still probably have to have someone from staff or PD or somebody there with you. They're not just going to car blanch, let you go out and start painting the town.
And I'm not trying to digress. I'm just trying to say that's a separate discussion and it's a citywide issue. It's not a district specific issue. And we have a graffiti removal team and we have a budget, just like we have an art fund. When people pull permits or develop projects, they pay into an art fund. We've got an art fund. So when you do art projects, there's money available to do art. And if you got a good idea and you got an art project, you got a graffiti removal, that kind of thing, then let's get behind it and let's help each other out.
And Ms. Mayor, with all due respect, and I get that, I totally do. And I think with Councilman Bowie, his idea with the graffiti thing, and that would have been a great application only because there are certain areas that get hit over and over and over and over again. You take it down, the next day it's right back up. The city doesn't buy that real expensive paint that you can just squirt off and graffiti doesn't stick to it. But in those areas in your district, you could use this money to buy some of that paint so that problem is no longer a problem. It's very expensive. It's, you know, a hundred bucks a gallon or whatever it is. City doesn't buy that. And so there are things that it would be used for. This is not a grant program. This isn't something that people come and ask you for. This is for the council member to do things in their district. So that kind of is silly. But this issue proves the entire need for it. What's going on here right now proves why it's so needed. Okay? A good example, I came right after being elected. I'm trying to get some mailboxes painted or the electrical boxes painted. And, oh, Parks, that's Parks. And guess what? They don't have any money in their budget. You can't do it. Okay. Well, you know, that's the kind of stuff, the robot, the reason this money sits there untouched every year. And you said, oh, that money sits there and it never gets spent because it's so hard to spend it. You can't, you need an act of Congress to get anything done in the community. If you live in a part of the community that gets art projects, if you live right here, you get everything. If you live on Harbor Boulevard, every, you live over on the West End, there is no art going on. You can't get anything going for your community without, and this here proves the whole need for it. The fact that we disagree on spending five thousand dollars. I mean, that's silly. It really is.
I just want to have two last comments before we can wrap this up if possible. I think we've all said what we need to say, but two things I'm going to say. Number one, sure, it takes an act of Congress to do something, but I don't think having this policy in place is going to change that. Omar still has to review it. Scott still has to review. It's still going to be an act of Congress to do something. And only you can just buy donuts and coffee and bring people. That's rules you're probably going to break. I don't think you can just up and decide you're going to buy some paint and do this. There's a bunch of processes that have to occur. So trying to tell the public that we're going to pick and choose what we're going to do and make it seem like it's not going to be this arduous task to accomplish that is false. Number two, I'm just going to be salty for a minute and say that I love that we really want to just be willy nilly with the policy using taxpayer dollars. But we needed to have a really extensive and comprehensive policy for a flag. So I'm going to end with that one.
I wanted to just say, I wanted to bring it back a little bit. This is very well intended from George, I think. We shouldn't get divided over this. We can still get things done. It was well intended. You've got individual council members here that are, know their districts very well. And we just want to do things that we know that the community wants in our district. No offense to, you know, a neighboring district or what have you. We just want to do stuff. So, and maybe cut the red tape a little bit. So it's very well intended. It's probably not going to pass, but at least we can vote on it and move on. Thank you.
But we don't even necessarily need to take any action whatsoever.
I have a motion and I have a second.
Motion? I didn't think there was a motion or a second. I don't believe there was a motion or a second at this point in time.
Obviously not enough to pass it. So I think it would be frugal to vote on it.
Yeah, we could just let it, we could just let it lie. But I mean, I think I would encourage coming out of this that we work on communication on what we want to see done and what we want to see in our districts and work to support each other and work to support allocating funds for special projects or whatever, you know, whatever we-
And shorten the time.
Whatever we think is in the best interest of the city and/or in our districts, let's bring it forward with passion and enthusiasm. Let's support each other in doing right for the city.
So maybe from this moment on, maybe each district, we can come up with the projects.
Yeah, wish list.
We make a list. We have twelve months. So we have six districts. Every two months can take turn one project for each district. Something we can work on.
It'll take another year to get it roundy again, huh?
I think this is something that the mayor has said before. So I kind of, I think I've said this to staff during briefings as well. We have an annual retreat, which we end up using more as a budget study session where we could use our time. I know the mayor has constantly said this, to actually discuss and talk about projects that we want to see rather than focusing on the budget. If we need to have a budget study session, let's do that separately. But our council retreat should talk about these sorts of things so that way we can plan ahead for the year and see some actual outcomes come out of that.
Bring this up in another manner at that time and talk about that. And I think it would fit in nicely.
Okay. We'll move on to just general matters going around the horn. Anybody have any comments they'd like to make in closing on the meeting?
A couple of things. Well, just one thing, actually. Last night, we had a bowling event with the Chamber of Commerce. And yeah, the council team did pretty good. We took second place. So the police beat us out, so unfortunately.
Rematch.
Yeah, we're going to match year, next year. But anyway, it was a good fundraiser for the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce and was great to be a part of that. And that's about it. I know we had an Eagle Scout recently made. I can't pronounce his last name, but anyway, he's over here at the Lutheran Church and was a really good event. So.
I just want to remind everybody that we did transition to the Orange County Fire Authority for our fire service and things are going well. It seemed to be fairly seamless. I haven't heard any complaints. Just for general knowledge, all of our fire positions were offered a position over there at the Fire Authority. I believe most all took a position. There might be one or two that are still going through medical process or maybe they decided to retire. They tried to keep most of the engineers in the city so, because they drive the trucks, you know, so they know the streets in your neighborhood very well. But they will be rotating throughout the county. Some firefighters may have lived South County or somewhere else. They will have the choice of maybe petitioning to get a job in a different city. But for the most part, a lot of them stayed in Garden Grove. And I haven't had any problems with that at all. So you have a representative there on the Fire Authority and it's going well and there's a lot of resources there. And, you know, if anybody has any concerns or comments, let us know at City Hall. Give me a call.
I have two things. Tomorrow, first day of school for Garden Grove Municipal Schools District. So welcome all the students back to school and all the parents, please take extra time, watch out the traffic for the kids, and be safe. The second thing is next Saturday, September seventh, we have a Mid-Autumn Children's Festival in Atlantis Park. Partnership with City Garden Grove and the committee. So I would like to invite everybody, all the residents, taking your kit to the Atlantis Park. And everything free, even lantern will be passed out for free for all the kids. Event going to be three o'clock until eight thirty. Thank you.
Three quick things. Number one, we heard a couple of my residents come and speak tonight about some issues with their neighborhood. I just wanted to thank the Garden Grove Police Department for the officers that showed up and attended that meeting with me. They had a lot of concerns and it did feel like nothing was going to get accomplished from that, but reassured from some of the officers, some of the actions that they would take. And I also wanted to bring forward asking staff to look into lighting in that vicinity, not just on Jetty, but on Blue Spruce, Spinnaker, Jetty, Hilton, Dunkley, and Aspenwood. I would also like to thank Public Works. I've been able to go around and see some of the different departments and what it is that they do. And especially those that are working under the hot sun, just want to give them a good, big, huge- Just want to give them a good, big, huge shout out and thank them for all the work that they do. I also wanted to share that I attended a back-to-school night where school supplies was given to students for free at Bethany Church, which is in the Woodbury, La Boudina area. Great partnership between community and church. A lot of kids went back to school properly prepared and very happy, so great job, District Six.
First, first off, I have a couple things, but I want to pay tribute to Priscilio Sanchez tonight. The Sanchez family have lived here in Garden Grove for quite some time, for many years, and for many years have been dear family friends. And recently, Priscilio went through the necessary steps to become a United States citizen. So I want to congratulate Mr. Sanchez. Also, on vector control, a lot of cities are going live with positive mosquito samples. We have a lot of warm weather ahead. We have one person that's contracted West Nile virus, not in the city of Garden Grove, but nonetheless, we have to take this seriously. More than ever, please take measures to protect your property and your home, dumping and draining, check your screens, wear your bug repellent, those little ankle biter mosquitoes. Man, they nailed my daughter recently, she had like eight, nine, 10 bites on her legs, and they swell up and they itch and they're painful. So please be careful out there. On my social media page, I did post a checklist that you can download, it's on the OC Vector website, and you can kind of take that around your property, and it'll kind of show you, hey, you know what, I have a real problem here, I need to call Vector Control and have them come out, inspect my property. They're great about doing that, they really ramp up the number of employees that they have to help you and to take care of, especially this time of year. So you can call them at 714-971-2421, or you can go to OCVector.org. And I'd like to get that checklist to our PIO and Apolito if possible, to maybe put on our West Nile page, I think it would be helpful to the residents. And one other thing on the outreach front, the citrus greening disease, which is that little bug, that little psyllid that is on our orange trees and citrus, it's wreaking havoc all across our state. There is going to be another wave of treatment applications taking place. I did find out that the Gilbert Street area and that surrounding will be the first targeted neighborhood, and that'll probably take place around September 13th. So 48 hours before treatment, you will receive a pink card on your doorstep, and that'll talk about when they're coming by, what they're going to be treating with, and how it all works. They will work with you if you have concerns, if you have organic gardens, if you want your tree removed instead of being treated. So make sure you talk to them, they have been great working with me, the Department of Food and Ag, on getting just information. They had a meeting recently at the Main Branch Library, it was really well attended, so people are paying attention. And if you have further questions, you can reach out to me, or you can call their pest hotline, you will get a live person and they will be able to help you answer your questions. That number is 1-800-491-1899. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Just one quick thing, I got that scout's name, and I just want to give him a shout out. His name was now mister, he turned 18, Santini Simolo, so, common spelling, and he is leaving Garden Grove to join the Marine Corps, so.
That's awesome.
Good for him. All right, City Manager Scott Stowe.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just to echo Councilman O'Neill's comments, the transition with OCFA has gone fairly seamlessly from my standpoint, and I just wanted to report out to the council members that Division Chief Roberts is fully integrated in with our central management team of directors, and we're including him in all of that. Of course, there's a lot of stuff that he interacts in, and I just, it was really interesting, I think it's going to be news that it's going to be reported tomorrow, OCFA and Orange County sheriffs, they just made a big arrest of a, of an arsonist who was setting fires all over Orange County. And so that person was arrested, that was just announced today, so that's a good thing. And my only other comment, I told Councilman Brightagum at the bowling tournament last night, I won a big, huge box of meals ready to eat, compliments of the 102nd Airborne in Kentucky, and they're not going to do any good sitting in my garage, so I'll donate them over to Councilman Brightagum, and he has some Boy Scout troops I think he can give them too, so that's all I have.
Thank you. We will, I guess not adjourn, but we have to go to closed session for some more, and then we may have some kind of reporting out if necessary.
Right. Yeah, so we were not able to complete our closed session discussion, so we do need to adjourn back into closed session.